All right, Sheila, just want to confirm you can hear us in the chambers.
I can hear you, can hear me.
I can, yes.
You're perfect.
All right. The time is seven oh one P M and I will call this meeting to order. May we have roll call, please?
Mayor Riechel.
Here.
Brotem Hennerhan.
Here.
Justin Brittenall.
Here.
Trustee Brittenall, I'm sorry. Trustee Claussen.
Here.
Trustee Inglehart. Trustee Poston.
Here.
Trustee Seifert.
Here.
May rise for the Pledge of Allegiance at a moment of silence.
What do you do?
United States of America and the two republics for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, be seated. Okay, first item tonight's agenda is public comments. We'll start with persons desiring to make a public comment on items not on the agenda. Please activate the raised hand function in the meeting program. Or Sheila, any phone calls or emails in regards to non-agenda items?
No, sir, I did not hear from anyone.
I do not show any raised hands, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you.
We have a Jennifer Tharp here who would like to speak on the RAFTA fixed route system. Yeah, you can come up to the table there and.
Good evening. Go ahead and when you're ready.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. My name is Jennifer Tharp. I live at six thirty Richards Avenue in Silk, Colorado, eight one six five two. I am speaking to you tonight about the situation of the lack of a fixed route system in Silt. Um, I want to bring it up to you because I have lived in Silt for three and a half years and um, I currently use the traveler system in in Silt currently. It just doesn't work and we really need to get a fixed route system here in our area. We would be able to have an on-demand service like Glenwood Springs has plus a pair transit service for those who are disabled in the community. The on-demand service would be for people like you or and everyone in the community who would be able to be using it for things like, oh, I woke up, tried to start my car and oops, it didn't start today and I still have to go to work. And that would be worth raising taxes for, which would need to happen for a fixed route system to occur in Silt, I'm sure. Because to be a part of RAFTA, that would require some tax money. I'm sure. So I'm sure the taxpayers wouldn't mind something like an on-demand service to be a part of that taxpayers bracket. To use something like a service to be able to call in case of their car breaking down or any other situation, or to be able to get their kids to school or to be able to do anything else that they might need to be able to do without a car. Because you have to admit, sometimes there are more people than cars in a household. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak, ladies and gentlemen. And I hope that you will take what I've said into consideration. I've been totally blind now since two thousand eighteen and legally blind all my life. I've used Para Transit all my life. And this is the past three years has been a very difficult situation. Not having it. I love Silt as a community. But the lack of a fixed route here has been very difficult for me. Please consider becoming a part of RAFTA and getting a fixed route in our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And we have, and I'm having a hard time reading the handwriting, somebody eight twelve Home Avenue. Uh, what's the name?
Denny Ray.
Denny Ray.
If you could.
Regarding easements.
Come on up to the. If you could start with your name and address for the record and then go ahead.
Okay, uh, yes, I'm Denny Ray, eight twelve Home Avenue, Silk, Colorado, eight one six five two. And I've been working really hard to write this. I don't read particularly well, so please bear with me a little bit. Dear members of the town and Forward Thinking Board and amazing citizens. And my kudos to our supervisor in Joe Lundin and I don't, I'm not trying to cross people. I was so pleased, I'm backtracked for a second. I was so pleased when I came earlier and I heard how much you guys are cooperating and working, like, how can we get things working out best and being really involved in the community? And that's my concern. I live on the corner of Home and Eight. If if the extra land that is taken is just part way, it won't ruin my irrigation, which is four forty thousand dollars worth of irrigation I have on the property. We've been maintaining that strip of land for more than a hundred and ten years. Before this town had a name. That's been being protected and so there's there's some question whether the full width is what we really need. Or if it can be, I mean, I'm, I want to be supportive of the town, but I want the Old Town to be a town. It's a it's a community, it's a neighborhood. And I agree, going back and forth, I'm the cost of of this major, some variation of sixty-foot whole thing. Trees are going to be bare. There's, there's one mark that implies a sixty-foot tree, it's a, it's a juniper is going to get cut less than than three feet from the body of the of the tree. It won't live. And there's a lot of that kind, there's a whole slew of problems in here and I'm, I'm going to submit this and some of you may have had the chance to receive it today, uh, from Brenda at the library was trying to get information out for me. There's a lot of support that environment and the trees and mature trees are very, very valuable. It's the Colorado easement laws are supporting that. The EPA, everybody is supporting that right now. And to have it cut as deeply as the fifty-seven law authorized, I guess, is going to put a lot of people in danger. It's going to put the town in danger. I'm I'm here saying, if you guys cut into the roots and kill those trees, I will have to handle the responsibility and I will stand on that from everything that I've been able to pull up here, which has been pretty substantial, actually. I thought about it a lot and I understand wanting to improve stuff. I so improve, I so understand that. Also want to keep Old Town, so if we can come to some kind of a middle. Something I presented to, um, Joe a couple of weeks ago, I'm not exactly sure when, I would also like to make this, uh, presentation is, make, so I'm going to give it to you guys as well.
I'm just gonna, so we only do three minutes for public comment, but I'm gonna let you go and finish up this idea that you're on.
Thank you, and I'm so sorry.
Yes, that's okay.
I really appreciate it. Um, okay, so I'm going to leave this for anybody that wants to make copies. And I'm also going to leave this too. So if you want to give me just that one last second. What, as I said, I've been very, very concerned about what we've got going on out here. And I'm going to be leaving this as well. And it's not perfect. I, I see I could have drawn a couple more lines, all right? This is the indication, all these black lines of all the people coming in, out, the cars, the ingress and egress. I have an idea on the back page here that, golly. This is how much less it would be and even flow of traffic if it would be a one-way going from Main up to Grant, which would allow traffic to be going toward six post office, toward the Cactus School, Elementary School, et cetera. Anyway, lots of ideas. Thank you for the time. Thank you, guys.
Thank you for coming in, yes.
No, I would have.
Yes, if you want.
Thank you, Danny.
Trying, trying so hard to be.
No, thank you very much for coming in. Yes, it's great whether we get to hear from citizens and things are impacting, so we really appreciate it, yes.
Thanks, thanks. I'm going to say, I really appreciated that bit I heard earlier about who you guys are in the board. I'm proud of this town, you know, I love.
All right.
All right, bye.
Thank you, thank you.
That's it. Uh, the rest of the guests that signed up are here for the Lift Up presentation.
Okay. All right, sounds good. Is that, just to be real quick, that's, everyone's here for the Lift Up presentation? Okay, sounds good. Thank you, everybody, for for being here. That's the end of public comments. We'll move on to the consent agenda. It contains the minutes of the May twelfth, twenty twenty-five Board of Trustees meeting. Uh, number two, the approval of the contract to amend and extend the contract between the town of Silt and Tara Gotham.
Gotham.
Gotham, uh, the owner of the Holiday Inn. And number three, the renewal of the Rosalinda Entertainment Liquor License. Anyone like to discuss any of those separately or make a motion?
Mayor, make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
All right. A motion by trustee Seifert to approve the consent agenda as presented, seconded by trustee Clausen. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All's opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Do any board members have any conflicts of interest with agenda items tonight?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor.
None for me. Any agenda changes by staff of the board?
We have none.
The board? No.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, then, perfect. What everyone's here for is a lift-up presentation, so I will turn this over to manager man.
I will turn it over to our guests.
Okay. Do we need to pull some extra chairs up there? Are you guys?
No.
Just two, okay.
So, good evening. My name is Elise Fottle. I am the interim executive director at Lift Up.
And my name is Hannah Sazza and I am the programs manager for Lift Up. We also have a few other folks with us here in support of Lift Up. We have Sam Lander Casper with Peking County, but he's here representing McFins, which stands for the Mountain Coalition on Food and Nutrition Security. And I'll talk about that a little bit more during my presentation. And Namrata, and I never can get your last name correctly, so help me out. And she is the chairwoman, right, of McFins?
I've run.
Um, so I apologize. We had hoped to have a board member here to do this presentation and his wife was in a bicycle accident earlier today and they are still at the hospital. So I'm sort of stepping in at last minute. She's okay. She's getting some stitches, just doing an MRI to be cautious. I think everything's going to be fine, so forgive me, though, I'm sort of like the the pinch hitter here, so. Um, so we can go ahead and, uh, forward from. So today we're going to talk about who is Lift Up, what is the current state of food insecurity, how are we responding and how you can help us? So our mission is to be the leader in providing equitable food security for individuals and families, educating, building, understanding and support to免hunger from parachute to Aspen. You guys are right there in the middle. Next line. So, starting off with what does Lift Up do? If you're not familiar with us, we are, I've heard this phrase before, we are the Amazon of food. So we're providing food to those who are food insecure and that means that you don't have your basic food needs being met or they're not being adequately met with good nutrition. Um, so what we do is we have a number of pantries of choice and we're, they're called pantries of choice because you get to go in and you shop as if you were at Kroger, City Market, whatever. You're choosing your own food, you can put together a meal. Um, we're going to make sure that there are shelf-stable foods, meat, dairy and produce. We also have two soup kitchens, um, currently in Glenwood and Rifle and a third one coming online in Parachute, which we're very excited about. We do something called seventy-two hour bags, which are distributed through a number of our, um, partner organizations. What are the bowls? Um, some of those include school-based resource centers, um, some of those are local clinics and then some of those are libraries. And the idea behind them is if someone comes in expressing um, food insecurity or a need for food, that bag essentially will get them through seventy-two hours until they can get to one of our programs to get more food from us. We also do have some, um, federal pass-through programming called CFSP, which is our senior boxes, um, which are like shelf-stable foods that are specifically packed and ready to go for seniors to be able to cook for themselves. And TFA, which is the Emergency Food Assistance Program, which does have some income limits related to it. Otherwise, our programs, we don't, we don't ask for any of that information. If you are food insecure, then we will give you food. Um, new this year is the mobile pantry and you may or may not have seen that. That's parked out at the baseball fields, correct?
Thank you all for that.
Yes, thank you very much for that. Um, so that replaced a drive-through distribution model. Um, we had a number of drive-through distributions, which were sort of a legacy from COVID and they were formed in order to, um, adapt to the need for social distancing. And now that we don't have that need anymore, we have reduced those, um, to back to the brick-and-mortar pantries for the most part, except here in Silt, we don't have a brick-and-mortar spot, so we brought out our mobile pantry. And here are some pictures of that. Ta-da. So as you can see, you can actually go in and shop and just choose things off the shelves. And it does have a refrigerator and a freezer inside, so there is still, again, the meat, dairy and produce. We also do a program called Farm-to-Food Pantry. This was started during COVID as a way to help both the farmers and those who are facing food insecurity by making a connection between those growing produce and those needing produce. So we do forward contracts the beginning of the year so that farmers know what types of crops to grow. They have an idea of some of the revenue they're going to get. They can buy seeds, they can hire staff in advance. Um, and then we, there's a guarantee that 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 produce will be purchased after it's grown. So this is a list of some of the participating farms that we work with. So Lift Up has experienced a exponential growth over the last couple of years and that's really why we're here today is to talk to you about how we're facing, what we're facing right now. Um, we've seen growth go up a hundred and thirty-eight percent over, um, twenty twenty-two in the last, just, this is the last just two years. Um, and in the meantime, we've seen revenues going down. And the reason for that is because a number of those who donate to us were former recipients of our services. So they give back, they, um, what's that called? Play it forward? And contribute, but it's usually a small amount, you know, twenty, fifty dollars, a hundred dollars a month, whatever they can afford. And so as there's pressure on their income, that giving amount also goes down. And so that is being pinched right now. Um, as you'll see, we serve, next slide. Um, thirty percent children, thirty-five percent working families, twenty-three percent seniors. So a wide, wide array of folks are using our services. Next slide. And then there's that gap I was talking about with our revenues decreasing and our demand increasing, so if anybody's taken Econ one oh one, that'll look familiar. Next slide. So all of these things are happening at the same time that we are also seeing an unrelated because obviously the federal budgets are just now being adjusted. So these things have been happening independent of current cuts, but we are expecting to be impacted by those. So if Feeding America is at the federal level food bank, they, um, pass food down to Food Bank of the Rockies, which you may or may not be familiar with, and that's who we purchase our food from. So there could potentially be a trickle-down effect there. Um, obviously, the cost of living continues to increase. I know you guys are all familiar with that. Um, and a lot of folks used their savings up during COVID, you know, if they were furloughed or laid off or anything. And so they're really on that cusp of like needing help. Next slide. So just some percentages to kind of give you an idea, Garfield, Eagle, Peking, Colorado averages. Um, it does appear that Eagle and Peking are higher percentages. And I just want to say that the reason for that is because the cost of living is higher there. So it's, so it's that balance. Next slide. So this is what I mentioned before, Sam, Namrata are part of this Mountain Coalition for Food and Nutrition Security. So what this is, is it's an ecosystem of all of the different players in the food insecurity environment. So some folks focus on food rescue, which means going to the grocery store when things are about to expire and collecting those and bringing them to pantries to give away. Some folks work in the senior sphere, so Valley Meals and More focuses on prepared meals for seniors. So we all work together, we're all the same, uh, all on the same team. We sort of highlighted Lift Up here as being a little bit larger piece of the pie because what we do is we are the distribution arm of a lot of of the food. So whether it's purchase food from Food Bank of the Rockies or Food Rescue, it's coming through our warehouse a lot of the time before it goes out. We have the trucks that are distributed to the pantries. So we're sort of that, that arm, that Amazon that I referred to earlier in the presentation. Next slide. You can skip this one. Essentially the same slide. So McFins was started in twenty twenty-two. Um, and a big part of the ramp-up effort has been this sort of strategic planning process, trying to understand the environment, do a gap analysis, you know, who's being served, who's not being served, who needs to be served, all of those good things. And so we've gone through a strategic planning process. We've identified some areas for improvement. One of those was purchasing a food hub, which is our central warehouse now located in Glenwood Springs. It's about nine thousand square feet, so there's a lot of room in there to do fun things. Unfortunately, we're carrying quite the debt because of this purchase. And right now, we're sort of playing it safe, being very conservative with with our programming in order to balance out this debt that we're carrying. Um, this was something that was identified by the McFins Coalition and executed on by Lift Up. Um, also, you'll see here more fresh locally sourced food, that's sort of like that Farm-to-Food Program that I mentioned earlier where we forward contracts to the farmers. Another thing on here is, um, twenty-five miles or less between food distribution sites. And so that was the idea behind that mobile trailer that now serves Silt. So you can see that we're sort of wa, working in lockstep with McFins and sort of executing on the items that come up in the strategic plan. So this is Garfield County, Eagle County, Peking County. Like I mentioned, Valley Meals and More, Harvest for Hunger, Lift Up, like so many players are in this space working together to identify these needs. Next slide. So here's pictures of our food hub. So the picture on the left, as you can see, are the trucks that are loading and unloading at the warehouse. And then the picture on the right is from the street view, like where the offices are. Next slide. The pickle. I don't know who named this slide, but we'll go with it. So we went into about one point five million dollars in debt in order to expand the food distribution, um, infrastructure in twenty twenty-three. That was the purchase of the Glenwood Warehouse with that extra space. There was a number of ideas that were identified with that, um, room for farmers to store extra produce. And in fact, I think we are working with a meat production, um, farm that needed a place to have cold storage for some meat in the summertime, so they're going to be using that. Um, but also, uh, just a place to store extra produce. Um, we talked about doing a commercial kitchen at one point where farmers could then can or pickle any produce. So there's that word pickle again. Um, and also potentially even like teaching classes on how to cook with certain foods. You know, we were getting some kind of different types of produce at first, so like a patty pan squash. It was like, I don't know what a patty pan squash is. I don't know how to use a patty pan squash. So one idea had been like, if we had this commercial kitchen, we could do classes on like how to use some of these produce. So there was a lot of ideas that were thrown out there. Um, and we, we did it to support the McFins goal, we did it to respond to community need, and we did it to support our local farmers. And yet, here we are, holding the one point five million dollar debt on that. Um, so that's a struggle that we're working with, um, you know, and of course, every dollar that we have that we're spending on a mortgage or insurance or taxes is a dollar we can't spend on food and programming. So we've seen that unprecedented growth in debate. We've seen the reduction of donations. I've already mentioned both of those things. Um, as well as the previous and pending fallout of federal and state funding. Obviously, the state has a budget deficit, so they can't backfill any of that gap. So that's why we have to look to the local municipalities and our donor base. Next slide. So what have we done so far to try and get this back into balance? We have, as I mentioned, eliminated those drive-through pantries that were the legacy of COVID. We have, and that decreased food and, um, food waste and staff time and volunteer time that we could then redistribute um, to work on other programming. We did get a, a payment hold on our mortgage for six months while we tried to work through all of these, um, possibilities and options and brainstorm like how to get ahead of it. We offset the cost, um, with some local and regional food drives. So we did a food drive at all the city markets, all the way down the valley, all the way to Rifle. Um, and that was almost a thousand pounds of food from each store, like on average. So that was pretty amazing. Um, we have a great community. We just, we just need a little more of it. Um, so we have delayed hiring, um, an executive director of programs and operations director. I'm actually interim, I should have said that, I'm interim executive director, maybe I did. In any case, um, so I'm on a contract rather than staff, so you're not, they're not paying me for medical benefits, so on and so forth. Um, we have implemented an electronic.
Don't worry about that. What, the Hunger Games?
That is what it sounded like. Which is appropriate.
Yeah.
Um, so we have implemented a, an electronic inventory system, which we're really excited about. Um, we did the first piece of it, which is the intake, so that allowed us to link all of our pantries together and set some rules about how often people could visit in order to, um, moderate how much food was going out the door and sort of see, you know, where, where we were at and what we were paying for. Um, and then the next piece of that will be an inventory piece, so we'll actually be scanning food that people are shopping and being able to keep track of that and then be able to order like on-demand what we need. Um, and then the third piece of that, which we're really, really excited about, is online ordering. So it'll be like an Instacart experience where you can actually go online, order the food you want, select the pantry you're going to pick it up at, select a time, show up, take your bag of food. So it's like the best of both worlds. You get the drive-through experience with the customization of choosing your own food. Um, and finally, we did close the Glenwood Springs thrift store. Um, it was not supporting our bottom line. Our thrift stores are entirely a, um, what do they call it? The leg of the stool. So we have, you know, grants, donations and our thrift stores. And unfortunately, the Glenwood thrift store just was not making it, so, um, we had to, we had to cut that leg off. Um, on the flip side, we have also increased our fundraising effort, so we've hired a development director. Um, we'd had a board match, the board, um, put up sixty-three thousand dollars of their own money in order to like have donors match that. So that was a success. We're really happy with that. Um, we are actively grant writing, looking for whatever grants are out there that are appropriate. The, um, mobile trailer that we saw pictures of before was actually from a grant from the Yampa, Yampa Valley Community. Yampa Valley Community Foundation. So we do um take advantage of those grants when we find them. And again, with that hiring of the development director, we are trying to target some of those fantastic high net worth donors. Next slide. So unfortunately, if we are not able to get our budget balanced and get out of the red, these are the things that are at stake. So I, we already talked about seventy-two hour bags. Um, that's one of our partner programs. The extended table is our soup kitchen, serving seventeen thousand guests, um warm meals. Or we didn't even talk about our diaper program, so we pass through diapers. We figure if you don't have to spend money on diapers, that's money you can spend on food. So that's kind of all the same pot of money. Um, we potentially would have to close the parachute and rifle thrift stores in order to be able to sell those properties. We don't want to do that because we also have pantries there. Um, but these are, these desperate times, desperate measures, right? And um close any distributions where the property is not owned. So right now, we have um, we pay a lease for Carbondale, Glenwood Springs, Newcastle. I think that's it. That sounds right. Um, but worst of all, if we were to try and balance our budget today, we would have to turn one out of every three guests away. Like, that is what's really at stake here, and we don't want to have to do that. So. Next slide. So what we're trying to do is get back in the black and pay off that capital debt that I mentioned before, that one point five million dollars on the Glenwood Springs food hub. And if we are not paying, again, those taxes, those insurance and that mortgage, all that money is going into programming and food and bellies. So that is where we're trying to get to. So we are talking to all the municipalities in the region that we serve, and we're sharing the situation that we're in, just so that we can ask for whatever help you are able to give. I'm not sure. There we go. Investing together in food security. So there's our, our region that we serve, the towns we serve. And last slide. So Sam was actually responsible for organizing this Colorado State University study. Charitable food assistance is critical for bridging the gap between federal food assistance and meeting basic needs. Thank you very much. Are there any questions?
Thank you, yes. Um, how, how often is your food pantry here in silt?
It's one day a week for three hours.
It's one day a week for three hours. Um, I think that that is, we would love to expand that and be here more frequently. Um, preferably in, right now, we're at the baseball fields. And so I think that access to people on foot um is not super easy if you live across town. I know it's not that long of a walk, but you know, uh, not everybody can do it. Um, and so one of my ideas for the programming is if it allows, I would like to park somewhere more localized in town also. A second day of week, maybe around the Senior Living Center um or somewhere around there. And then we also deliver um senior boxes here in silt to the homes of, I want to say, just off the top of my head, around thirty seniors between home deliveries and at their senior luncheon here in town.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
I have a whole bunch of questions, but I'm not, I don't want to, I don't want to keep us here till midnight. So is there someone or some way that I could reach out to you and ask those questions?
Yes, you can email me at operations@liftup.org. Plural operations. We have many operations.
Okay, that's what I would do again. I, I used to work in a nonprofit social service agency a long, long time ago, so I.
Well, I used to be a town counselor, so I appreciate your time.
Glad I'm here. Yeah, I'll reach out and share my questions with you.
I've got two questions. Um, what percent of Lift Up's total budget goes to staff payroll?
That is an excellent question that I cannot answer off the top of my head, but I will get back to you.
Okay. Um, and then the second one, this is just me thinking back to the early nineties when we did Boy Scout food drives for Lift Up.
Yeah.
Um, at that point, it wasn't a pantry of choice. Like, we would volunteer, we'd stick six containers in a bag, and it went out that way. Um, being a pantry of choice, is there more food wasted?
No, there's less food wasted because folks come in through the pantry and they usually bring their own shopping bags. We have little shopping carts to help them with that experience. And they're literally choosing the things that they want off the shelf.
Okay.
I mean, granted, they could get home and throw it all out, but I, I think it's a better experience than when we were pre-packing the bags and you just got what you got. And that was what we were doing for these mobile distributions, and that's the big reason why we discontinued them.
Okay. My, my thought process was, I remember like, you know, Uncle Joe's coming over to buy lima beans. He doesn't show up. You donate to Lift Up and you end up with eighty cans of lima beans that nobody wants. So if, whether those, those products just sit there wasted on the shelves? So is there a, maybe a, a, an outreach program on what, what people use the most?
Yes. Go ahead. So we do have, when we do food drives, we do have a list of preferred items. Now granted, somebody can donate whatever they want. But for the most part, you know, we have a list of, I'd say, what, fifteen, twenty items that are the most popular items? And so those are the things that we ask for people to donate. And so we'll set up outside the grocery store. We'll give the list to the, the Boy Scouts. We do have that big Boy Scout um food drive in Newcastle. Yep, that's coming up. Um, so we'll give them the list of the most popular items. And so for the most part, that is what we get back. Um, and the same thing is true with the Farm to Food Program, is we give the farmers a list of the things that we are um wanting to, that we know will, will be popular and that folks will use in the um pantries. And so those are the things we ask them to grow.
Okay. And then what is the average cost of a, a, a customer coming through and filling their, their cart and going out of the, the pantry? Do you know what that, the value is on that?
We did that calculation, but it was like right when, yeah.
Beginning of the year.
Yeah, I think that the prices have fluctuated so much that it's really hard to say. And then also, the way that the system works is that you get points to shop with every single month based off of how many people are in your household. And so everybody is taking different amounts of food out of there. You know, so like I myself have a family of five, you know, so I would get a hundred points to use throughout the month to shop. And then versus someone who has a household of one, they're only spending forty, they have forty points to spend throughout the month. And so it does fluctuate a lot. And then it is also kind of hard without that inventory system in place because while we do buy a majority of our food, we also have a lot of food donated. And right now, it's really hard to tell, you know, what was donated and associating a cost with that.
Okay.
Is there an option to, if you get beyond the hundred points, to get another hundred at a discount based on need?
Um, no, not currently. Um, there, there is that hundred points, but there are always items that are zero point items. Um, so bread are always, is always going to be zero points. All of our produce that we get from the farmers is always zero points. Um, a lot of times, that includes a lot of our grocery rescue that we get from the grocery stores. So the idea is that even if they run out of points, they can still come to us to get those zero point items. So say, week three, they run out of, you know, points to use. They can come for week four to get those zero point items. And then we also heavily partner with Food Bank of the Rockies, who does a drive-through style distribution in Elgabel on Tuesdays, and then rifle and Glenwood on Saturdays. And so we always refer people um to those distribution sites if they are expressing a higher need. And of course, that's a case by case basis. If someone ever came to me and said, Hannah, I, I'm out of points and I have no food, I'm going to make sure that person walks away with food. Like, that's the business, you know?
Can people trade time for points? Can they can't volunteer or help participate in Lift Up programming in order to earn points to feed their family?
No, they cannot. Those points are given to everybody on an equal basis that expresses the need, and the volunteers are donating their time separately from that.
But we do love for them to do.
Again, if they exceeded their hundred points, could they, if they don't have money, could they give some of their time to get more points back?
We currently do not have that in place, something like that in place.
And I think the thing that you have to understand is like, even though our mission is to end hunger from parachute to Aspen, we are supposed to be a supplemental food source. We are not intended to be their one and only food source. So the points are allotted, I think, very generously. It's amazing how much you can get. I mean, like, my mind was blown the first time that I spent time in a pantry and watched people leaving with like three bags of groceries that would cost me like easily a hundred and fifty dollars. And that's like fifteen points. So that's, there's lots of, lots of options for how to use your points. And I think that, as Hannah says, if somebody's really, really struggling, we're never going to turn them away. What we're going to do is we're just going to refer them to the things that are free anyway.
And I do have one more question that I will ask publicly because I think it's relevant and important. Are individual donations one-time transactions? Or could I, as an individual donor, set up a recurring? Like, I may not have five hundred dollars now, but I could give you fifty dollars a month. That's sort of a model.
Absolutely.
I can set that up programmatically.
Yes, absolutely. And we'll even do it for municipalities. Wink, wink.
This brings me to my question.
Yes.
What's your shortfall in your budget? Dollar a month?
The shortfall in our budget is, well, it's hard for me to put a number on it because we've been playing with the budget. And so we've been making these cuts and trying to see, you know, how things are falling out. So for instance, we stopped the um mobile distributions, the drive-through pantries in March first. So it hasn't really been enough time to see how those things have played out. Um, we've also reduced staff costs, so we haven't quite seen how that plays out. But I would say probably about a half a million dollars.
Yeah.
And I think that I would also just like to point out that the need for food is not going down. And so like, there are other steps and initiatives that I personally would like to see Lift Up put in place. And I know that all of my coworkers and all of my volunteers would love to see put in place. But unfortunately, we're at like a hold right now. And, you know, that's very unfortunate because there is so much room for growth to make sure that the needs are being met. And I think that it would be beautiful to be in the position to be able to do that.
Any further questions?
I don't have anymore.
I'll reach out.
Thank you.
Great.
Be here till midnight.
Thank you, Rush.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the dis- or on the agenda is a revenue discussion.
How fun for us. Um, hopefully you had an opportunity to read through the memorandum. Um, and we're just starting in, to kind of get into the process where we're looking at the two thousand twenty-six budget. Um, and with, we've been monitoring expenses and primarily, this is kind of being driven by a couple of issues. But when you look at the two street projects that we are undertaking uh in two thousand twenty-five, the Eighth Street Project and the Grand Avenue Project Phase One, uh, both projects are roughly nine hundred to a million dollars. We've received grant money for both projects, which we have basically two million dollars worth of projects. And we have one million dollars worth of town's expenditures to cover those two projects. So that leaves us with a million dollars of street projects that we're working on right now. And we have a revenue source, which is one percent of the three percent um, uh, sales tax goes towards streets. Um, the math doesn't work long term for us to continue this pace of replacing and refurbishing our streets. Um, so that's kind of led us to have this discussion in terms of revenues. I think there's another issue that we're dealing with, and it's how do we pay for some other programmatic uh, uh, more fun items, which is our parks and our recreations programs, of which we don't have a dedicated revenue source. And we have long talked about that it would be much easier for us to be in a position to provide more recreation activities uh, and a better influx, uh, uh, influx of dollars into our parks if we had a dedicated revenue source. Last year, about this time, we had a brief discussion uh on the implementation of a tobacco tax. Um, and that tobacco tax um just didn't go anywhere because we just didn't, there wasn't a real big desire from the part of the Board of Trustees to move forward. Uh, there was a request for some additional study on it. We really haven't moved forward with any of that as well. Um, so I just wanted to kind of bring up for some general discussion uh, some of the needs that we've got coming. We've got significant road projects that we need to move forward with. We've got, uh, we're, obviously, we're in discussion for purchase of a number of properties throughout town for various activities. Um, we have a uh aging uh town hall that is at its capacity, uh, not only from a personnel perspective, but then also from a technological perspective. And it is not, uh, uh, our current building is not ADA compliant. Uh, we, the best thing we did was put the doors in. It sure helps a lot of people get in and out of this building. But when it comes to getting to all areas of the building, we can't move them. Um, so we have some issues that we have to deal with. Uh, the cost of a new building, just really, this is a big guess, somewhere between ten and fifteen million dollars that would cover police, administration, and then improving the public works facilities. That's all kind of one package that we put together. Um, the debt service on a twenty-year note bond for uh a building would run about one point two million dollars a year. That's a pretty hefty price tag, and it's dollars that we don't have. Um, we're, the, the town has been working at trying to improve sections of roadway where it can. Obviously, we're leveraging grants as we can get them. Um, we have a significant grant that we're working on refurbishing a community park with uh, that will be discussed in the near future. Um, but we have needs. We're going to need additional officers in the future. We're going to need additional public works employees in the future. We need personnel and community development. Believe it or not, administration is staffed pretty well, and we don't see any time in the near future that we're going to be adding positions in the administrative side. Um, so that's not an issue. But when you start looking at those positions, each one carries a fully loaded cost somewhere between seventy and a hundred thousand dollars. Um, and that's a recurring expense. That's not just a one-time expense. Um, so just to kind of give you a couple of numbers to noodle on, and then I'd like to have some discussion. Uh, a one percent increase in the town's sales tax generates currently with current population about six hundred thousand dollars. Uh, if you were to double the town's property tax on the mill levy of eight nine, eight point nine seven three, that would generate about four hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Uh, if we did a tobacco tax that is fairly equal to the town of Newcastle, that would generate approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, if the town were to modify the way it charges its use taxes on construction, uh, that would uh, uh, generate approximately four hundred thousand dollars, which would be about a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar increase over what it's currently being charged. Right now, we are charging a ridiculously low uh use tax. And when I say ridiculously low, we are charging the tax based upon a square foot of construction costing a hundred and nineteen dollars. Um, even the cheapest estimates that we see now are somewhere in the three hundred dollar range. And then many times, you're looking at four hundred dollars or more. Um, and we charge the three percent on that, half of that one hundred and nineteen dollars. Um, because it's assumed that half is for materials and half is for labor. Uh, town of Newcastle and the town of rifle charge their use taxes based on actual costs. Um, we do it the simple way of just a flat square footage charge. And I know a lot of front range communities do the same thing. Um, we could go to the uh, uh, the actual cost. It probably creates a lot more work from a staff perspective because somebody's got to audit it every once in a while. There's a certain number of projects that you'd actually have to go back in and, and actually do some auditing. But that would be, that's another source of revenue that's out there. The first three. The first three, uh, the one percent sales tax, any property tax or a tobacco tax, they all require voter approval. Because that's an actual, it's a new tax. And so the electors have to approve it. The fourth one, which would be adjusting the way we calculate our use taxes, that would, that's a local decision. So I bring these, you know, these items up just to get you start thinking that we're going to start having. Longer discussions about how much we're going to be doing in town. We have to maintain what we've got. So we have a fair amount of work that we have to do as a sunk cost that there isn't any way getting around it. So the question will be, at what point do we start slowing down our capital expenditures? Or do we start generating additional revenue sources? We've had some discussion internally that a, a tobacco tax. Might be a way to fund parks and recreation, simply because it's a sin tax. And the, the tax is then being used for something that would go to parks and youth sports, et cetera. And it's a benefit. I know one of the questions that came up last year in discussion was about, well, is this going to stop people from, you know, well, is this going to help people stop smoking? I will be very honest and say this isn't about stopping people from smoking. It's about a tax. It's about a revenue grab. It's about generating revenue so that we can provide services to the community. Tom Boyd can say, all right, we're going to do a tobacco tax and ninety percent of it's going to be used for X, Y, and Z. And ten percent of it is going to be used for tobacco cessation. Kind of shoots our own butt because the tax will potentially be diminished. But you could do that. So I mean, there's a number of revenue sources that are out there. Most of them will require voters of the electors. And I'm not saying that we should take any, necessarily take any ballot initiative to the voters this fall. I think we may want to strongly consider it. We have until the end of August to get that onto the ballot. We have to notify the county that we have the potential of doing it. And I think we already have that we may be doing something, so they, they, they reserved it. But we have some time to make a decision if you're going to take something to the, the electors. I would not suggest either the one percent sales tax or anything with the mill levy at this time. Simply because I think a lot more work needs to be done for it as opposed to creating a sin tax. I would also strongly recommend that we modify the way we calculate our use taxes and that can be done locally.
And use tax goes to the general fund?
Yes.
I would agree with the recommendations of the two last ones. Because the conversation about the sin tax last year was that there were too many items already in the ballot. And we didn't want to impose something that we thought that could potentially be of use of sale on a ballot that may be too packed with things in it. I think that was part of the discussion of the reason why we decided to move it to this year.
Yeah.
There was some interest in exploring the idea.
I think the idea too of tying like the tobacco's tax to Parks and Rec or something like that. At least it gives the people that are paying that tax, uh, they know where it's going, what it's going to. It's not just dumping into the general fund necessarily. It gives them a little bit more. May, might make it more palpable. I mean, they're going to like it either way. But it's one of those things that, I mean, because in addition to these taxes, there's also, I mean. Have we heard, heard from Raft at all about them coming in and talking to us and what they're, what they would require, what they need? Because that's something else that obviously we have somebody come in at least one, at least once a month now asking about transportation. And that's something else.
We are in the process of getting somebody here from Raft to talk about membership. And what, what that would look like. And again, joining Raft would require a ballot initiative.
And the thing with the use tax is, I mean, it's, we keep, every, constantly talking about affordable housing. And then we do something like that, but, but it is, but it's necessary too. Because it doesn't matter how many houses we build, if we don't have streets to get to the houses and all those things that we need to do to maintain and take care of the town, we can't do that either.
I mean, someday we're going to have to do all of these. That just who knows when, but.
Well, I mean, at our current pace and Director Lundin can. It's going to take us for. Three more, at least three more phases to get Grand Avenue.
At least to Seventh Street, yes.
To Seventh Street. And then we're doing Eighth Street this year from Maine to Grand Avenue. And it's an expensive street because we're putting in more infrastructure than was there previously. Because we're trying to make sure you've got adequate parking as well as sidewalks. But we have Eighth Street, Sixth, Fifth. Fourth.
Fourth.
All needing the same basically two-block section.
Fourth, Fifth, and Sixth. They typically just need sidewalks. The asphalt's already there, already been redone.
So those might be a little cheaper.
But not two or three years.
Right.
For to do it anyway.
Right.
Not, yeah. I'm in favor of let's, I, I think we should move forward with the tobacco tax on this, this year's ballot. Justin's point of the people that use tobacco, thinking their money's going somewhere else. I think flipside of that is the people that don't use tobacco are more likely to vote for it because they don't like the people using it. So they see it as a way to get them to quit. So I think that one has a pretty good chance of potentially passing. Use tax, I think we need to change for sure. I've done a couple of building projects, you know, remodels and stuff. And the amount of use tax you pay is, is very minimal. But I think we need to do a blanket kind of thing, not an actual, because the, the time to go back and audit.
No, I.
I mean, builders are going to look any way they can to save twenty bucks with fake invoices or whatever they've got to do. So just make it a blanket. This is what it costs and.
Yeah, same model, just a higher number.
Yeah. Sales tax, I think we're going to look at in a couple of years. And property tax is going to be tough because I see over the next five years, everybody is going to be trying to get more out of property taxes.
Exactly.
Gets that pool of money is going to be trying to get more of it, so.
And I will add that, you know, with growth comes additional revenues. Right now, if you take our roughly thirty-eight hundred population divided by our total anticipated sales tax revenues. It works out to be about four hundred and seventy dollars, four hundred and seventy-five dollars per capita. Our average household size is three, just over three per residential unit. When you're looking at some of the growth and development that we're looking at down along the river, there will be growth in revenue. But there also come with, with residents come growth in costs too. There are other things that come along. So there, while there will be growth in sales tax revenue, I don't think we can just grow our way out of the issue. Out of our issues. We're going to, we're going to have to look at future tax levels. And I, I hate, I don't like saying that. I mean, I. I pay eight and, eight and a quarter on groceries where I live. Because they have the optional sales tax on groceries. That's a basic need. I would never suggest that we should have a sales tax on groceries. Uh, it should be on actual goods. But I don't think we can grow our way out of it with growth in sales tax alone. I think at, at some point, you're going to have to look at the overall revenue model and there's going to be a need for additional resources from where we are right now. And right now, Silt has a pretty low tax rate at three percent. Our neighbors are higher.
What about lodging fees? I know it'd be a very small increase. Is that a voter approved?
The tax itself was voted on. And so I think increasing it would require.
Two and a half.
Another vote. Yeah. I'm sure Attorney Bond can put me on the straight.
I think you, you got it right.
Yeah.
You got a. Is any sales or proper tax increase?
Including lodging.
Including lodging.
We did, we did that raised.
Yeah, I mean, it's such a small.
Usually an easy one for.
And it's an easy one for. Because they're not paying.
But it's a small revenue number because we don't have that many units.
Correct.
Yeah.
Even if, you know, you include Airbnb and VRBO, it's, it's still a very small number. I don't know that it's going to move the needle.
I mean, everything moves the needle.
Not much. I agree. I agree with you, Mr. Perrin, of the value as well as the order. I think the tobacco tax and the use tax. Are pretty straightforward and can be done sooner rather than later. The other two are more complicated and I would put property tax at the absolute end of that. I, I agree with you wholeheartedly. There's going to be a lot more hands reaching in for that money. We should know more about that before we pick a number.
No, I agree. Yeah, like the use tax, just, just because it's in front of me, three hundred, you know, pick a number like three hundred and just stick.
We'll do more work on. What the number should be. This was just a number that we pulled from a recent development that we, we, concept that we reviewed and it was three hundred bucks a square foot.
We should at least be level with our local municipalities, with our neighbors.
They're doing it on, uh, both Rifle and Newcastle are doing it on actual cost.
Yeah, I say keep it a fixed.
But we, we could keep the blanket rate, but still be similar to what they are. So that again, if I'm a property developer coming in, I'm not saving as much. But I'm also not spending any more than I would in those other communities. So it's less advantageous perhaps if I'm a developer, but it's, it's not a. It's not a no. It's not a decision maker for me.
Yeah. Understood.
And then, yeah, I, I agree with the tobacco tax. I mean, yes, we'll have to do all of them someday, but the other two can wait a little ways down the road, I feel.
Bad enough direction to dig.
I think that gives us enough direction to start working, working the materials out. Okay.
That is, you want to add to that?
I, no, I, I mean, I, I, I put a lot of time on in here because I didn't know how much discussion you would want to have. Related to the revenue side. You know, I, I think. You know, we, we got a real shocker last year when we opened the bids on the Home Avenue project. And we were so underestimated on what that project was going to cost. This year, we actually did pretty well in our estimating, uh, with the Grand Avenue project. And we actually brought that one in under what we had estimated. We haven't gotten the Eighth Street bid yet because we haven't put the final bid package together. But, you know, we're hopeful that we've overestimated on that one as well. But we have a lot of, you know, road and sidewalk needs throughout the, uh, the old part of town that we're trying to check away.
I know I, I had a complaint about that because I, I was talking to somebody and they're like, you're spending money on, on branding? Why on earth are you spending that? Because you know, you have roads and sidewalks and you guys still have winter banners on Main Street and you're talking about rebranding. I'm like. I, I, I see your point, so.
All things that need to be done, one person's priority is another one's.
Exactly, exactly.
Now, I'm not saying that the person that talked to you is, you know, saying, you know, that the, you know, the branding is a boondoggle. But it, obviously it's, I think it's important for the town, especially as we're looking at doing some of the things that we're doing. So I would not brand, I would not call it a boondoggle.
Good. All right. Uh, next item up then is the Eighth Street update. I will turn this over to Director Lundin.
Yeah, Eighth Street, we had a meeting with the residents and some of the business owners on April twenty-first. And several of them came in and had some ideas of what we could change on our plans. On your packet, you did see the new changes. But there's few. We lost some parking lots for Christians or the miners claim and some parking spaces at the Trailer Park. And, uh, this was just given to me last Wednesday. So I'm going to have another meeting with the residents and, uh, business owners to go over this. Probably in the next couple of weeks. Everybody will get a letter in the mail.
And just because we, we had the, the public comment earlier, how far over is that road supposed to go?
Mrs. Ray's property line is property right in the middle of all those bushes. And, uh, there's a fence to the north that's got to be moved a little bit. You know, if we want sidewalks, we, we need to use all our right of way, get as wide as possible. And Mrs. Ray brought in, she gave it to Jim. She gave it to me, so the map.
I, we can share those if you'd like.
That's something that would have been brought up at the next business and resident meeting.
Oh, okay.
And discussed it then.
And yeah, I mean, the, the town owns the property. It is the town's.
No, I agree. You know, there's, there's some houses involved that maybe couldn't be moved.
Yeah.
Or the restaurant that his cooler maybe can't be moved or could, but it'd be a major expense.
Yeah.
So we work with that.
And, and I agree with that, yes.
Fences, landscaping, they're easily moved and you can always plant more trees or plant more bushes.
Yeah.
We do have two members of the community that wanted to talk a little bit about Eighth Street.
Perfect. If you'd like to, this is not a public comment, but I think would the board like to hear from these two citizens?
Sure, yeah, they were here earlier.
Perfect. Come on up to the table if you'd like to and state your name and address and, and let us know what you're thinking.
You don't have to speak if you don't want.
Have to.
So I live at seven forty Home Avenue.
And your name?
Teresa. Fazzy.
Okay.
Oh, you have the dog Farley, don't you?
Marley, yep.
Marley, okay.
That came out today.
Yes, exactly.
Didn't get ran over, thank you.
Yes.
So I have, well, I have like different kinds of questions. Have you guys ever pulled out like right here at the stop sign? And on, was that, that's home and Seventh? If you have diagonal parking, you have, you literally are halfway in the street before you can see if someone's coming. If there's a truck parked at that corner. So does, and, and check it. You'll see how far you have to go into the middle of Seventh Street to be able to see if anybody's coming down Seventh Street. Um, so it's dangerous. So that's what I think of on whatever, the Eighth Street project. And one side is going to be the same kind of parking. How much more parking do you get going diagonal than parallel?
You'll lose about six spaces. And if you look at the plans, those bulb outs at the corner, that keeps people away from the corners. So when you do pull up to the stop sign, you have more vision. Now, if you look at the corner of Eighth and Home, five thirty in, in the evening, everybody's stacked at that corner. So you cannot see, but if you put those bulb outs there, you have to stop back and you have to park away from the corner.
Yeah, but wherever, I don't know where we're at in the building, but when you pull onto Seventh Street, I'm telling you.
Oh, I agree.
One white, I think it's a plumbing, like F one fifty.
I agree with you and that's something that's got to be addressed on every, pretty much every corner.
I think the, yeah, I, I think my difference is this one at Seventh and Home doesn't have the bulb outs. To stop someone from parking at that first, first spot, whereas this new plan does include that bulb out. So you're eliminating the, I, I would say it almost eliminates those first two vehicles from being blocking the view. I'm not a traffic engineer, but I would just assume if I'm looking at this drawing, we add two more parking spots that goes into the, the corner. So I think the bulb outs is what solves that.
It may not solve it, but it does help a lot.
It'll help, yes.
And at what point do you guys come take my fence down and put it up?
Well, that will be in the construction project. We still got one more meeting with the residents and the business owners. And then we'll decide.
Like, why can't you do it first?
Why can't we do it?
Think of you guys taking my fence down and, you know, I have two little girls. So there's not going to be any fence right there where all that construction is going. Like, why can't the fence be moved first?
That's something that when we do go out to bed, get a contractor, we can bring that to their attention. Let's get the fences done first. They do need a little room for their forms.
Yeah, that's fine.
You know, so they, so they need, they put up temporary fencing to make it safe for your kids. That would be addressed with the contractor.
Like a high fencing where they couldn't see over it? I'd be curious about what's on the other side.
If forty-eight inches is high, that's what it'd be.
One thing I would like to see with this this project, and maybe you've already looked into this, we have two alleys that meet there on Eighth Street. So we got the one coming from Seventh and the one coming from Ninth. They both go different directions.
That's.
So.
Yeah, the one way.
We always see, we have one-way alleys, but people always just shoot straight across alley, no matter which way they're going. The one behind Senior Center, or Senior Housing goes.
Yeah, it goes to Eighth Street.
And then the one coming from the liquor store and the pizza place goes west. And they both feed out onto, I mean, they're in, designed to both be out on the Eighth Street and everyone turns.
And Eighth Street, I agree, is one of the busiest streets in the evening.
Yeah.
And in the downtown area.
Yeah.
So that's something maybe we look into turning Senior Housing Alley to the, heading to the west.
To the west.
We'd have to reconfigure the parking area, which, and also look at the apartments on Seventh and the alley.
Yeah. Just, I mean, that's a, just a weird.
Something to look into.
It seems weird those alleys meet at that intersection because everyone goes both ways down.
Understood.
Yeah.
Do you have anything else?
But I, I do think, you know, the, the town definitely wants to work. Like, you have a concern about your fence. You know, Joe's the great contact.
No, I, no, I talked to Joe.
So I think, you know, when, when citizens have those, those issues or concerns, I don't even think it's an issue, it's a concern. I think the board, as a town, we want to work with you on that, and, and, uh, you know, I think Joe's going to do a good job with the, the contractor and let him know.
Yeah, I mean, I would ra- I would rather, if it goes through the, the fence, I'd really like my chain link fence put up just because.
No, we will definitely make it safe for your kids and your animals.
Yeah, um, the other citizen about, you know, the bushes being in the right of way, I mean, you tell this citizen they can keep their bushes in the right of way, now this citizen wants to put their dump truck in the right of way, and it just becomes
It never.
A big issue. I mean, so that, I mean, I think we have to look at the whole city, that the city Eastman's the city, City Eastman.
And, you know, we may look at, uh, Eastman contracts, you know, somebody encroachment Eastman contracts. Something that we may look at.
Right.
We just heard too much of that because then you have sidewalks that go like this.
Yeah.
And it just doesn't work.
Yeah.
So I've, I don't know if you can tell me, but why does Miners Claim not have to do anything?
I will honestly say I, I have the same concern when I heard that we weren't going to discuss with them about moving.
Miners Claim, that's nothing, nothing set in stone right now. There's still meetings to have.
Yeah.
Miners Claim has a cooler that is impeding in the right of way. His connections are right between his cooler and his building. And it would be very expensive for him to move it. And, uh, that's part of the discussion. You know, we did do a bulb out in the sidewalk for him. We also did a, we lost three, two parking spaces at the trailer park. So they wouldn't have to move their trailers. They probably would not survive a movement, a five-foot movement.
Yeah, so there is a compromise made on both.
Both.
Both ends of it.
But we looked at it from the perspective that if the cost was far exceeding the benefit, that there, if there was a way to work around it, we would work around it.
Yeah, I'm all for putting a sidewalk up Eighth Street, I mean, on, right in front of my house and, I mean, but I don't know about two, we don't, I don't know about one on one side and one on the other, just one sidewalk.
Put aside.
And I agree with that because there, prior discussion, I, I was like, if it's a foot or two, you know, who cares, but you know, ten feet, or like Director Lundin said, you know, fences and shrubs, they're easily moved, you know, a building.
You know, the town's going to grow. You can do sidewalk on one side, but ten years down the road, you're going to want to do sidewalk on the other side.
Yeah.
It's cheaper to do it now than probably ten years from now.
Exactly, yes, it's better for us to do it now.
Do it now, yeah.
It's like the dig ones rule.
Right.
Right, just lay the conduit now because you're going to want to do it in ten years if you don't.
Correct.
And it'll be four X more expensive.
So when are you having the next meeting with the impacted?
I've got to, uh, talk to the town engineer, make sure he can be there and staff. He'll come up with a good date, and then I have to mail out letters. I want to give the residents at least a week in advance.
Okay.
I'll hand deliver letters to the doors also.
Okay. I would like an update after that.
I will. As soon as we come up with the
Yeah.
everybody's happy, or most people are happy, or I'm going to present it back to the board.
I mean, yeah, we're never going to make everybody happy, but let's try and make.
Yeah.
Try, I'll try.
Happy, yeah.
And yeah, I mean, we, we thank you for, for coming in, you know, now as opposed to when it's done and then.
And then, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just have more questions than what is, will happen.
So if you're moving Christians over and you're moving the trailer park right above us over, then why aren't you moving my house over?
Because you're just a fence.
The sidewalk's going to go further?
Well, I mean, the side's going to be even on the street, but then it's going to, it's going to be narrower.
That and someday when, uh, Christian sells his business, that's where an agreement comes in. The new owner has to move the cooler. When if the trailer park or something for sales in the future, the new owner develops something, we may want to put that, the trailers will go, be, go away, and we'll put the sidewalk in the way it's supposed to be.
Sidewalk that could have been straight in the beginning?
Yeah, I think at that point, it's a developer cost.
Yeah.
That they would have to pay to, to make the adjustments. If, you know, Miners Claim ever sold and that cooler got moved, that'd be part of the would be, you've now got to make the sidewalk X Y to, to operate a business on that property, or if the, the mobile home redevelops.
I think I'd like to see the amount that Christian is saying it will cost to move that thing. I mean, it's not cheap.
Why would you move it to?
Well, it, it'd have to be moved to his roof and then replumbed completely. The way, that's what he told me anyway.
Or downsized.
Or downstairs, which I'm not sure how much room he's got downstairs.
Okay. Um, yeah, let's have another meeting.
We will.
And let us know what happens.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you very much for coming in.
Yes.
Good. Thank you very much for being here. All right, next up is the April twenty twenty-five financial report. I'll turn this over to Treasurer Tucker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So thirty-three percent of the year has gone by, and, um, we're doing well with sales tax. We're at almost thirty-seven percent of what we had projected of receiving this year, which is roughly about fifteen percent higher than what we had collected this, um, time last year. Um, use tax were a little low, um, that, a lot of that is because, um, building permits haven't been pulled for some of the, uh, subdivisions that are developing. Um, we're doing well in almost all of our, uh, revenue sources as far as our funds go. Uh, Silt Housing Authority is behind, um, because we didn't get any rents in April. We did receive it in May for April, so May will kind of catch that up. Um, we're in line with our trash, water, wastewater, and irrigation fees that we collect every month. And, um, I'll answer any questions you might have.
I don't have any questions. I just want to say highest April sales tax collected in the last five years?
Yes.
We didn't have the dip like we did last year that took us down below the year before, so.
Correct.
So now, now we're going to start to climb out the rest of the year.
Fingers crossed.
Fingers crossed, yeah. Any other questions or comments on the financials?
The numbers look great.
No, yeah, it looks good.
All right. Uh, then we will move on to the April twenty twenty-five financial report, or no? Man, we'll move on to manager and staff reports.
I'll just add, add two items to, uh, my report, which is tomorrow night's the CML District Meeting in Fruta. Trustees Hanrahan, Poston, and Engelhardt are going. Um, tomorrow night, we also have our first employee appreciation, uh, gathering, uh, so we'll be closing early tomorrow at three thirty. And then on June twenty-fifth, it is Bike Fest, otherwise known as Bike to Work Day. So Derek, I want you to get out, ride around the block before you start work.
My bike is right next to my bedroom most of the time, so it's a short ride.
Ride down the hall to your office.
Dog will be all jazzed up, and then I ride ten feet.
Those are the only two things I'd add right now.
I'd like to remind the board Saturday, June seventh is the first skate competition. Hopefully you can all show up and support kids.
There you go.
Are we getting the word out about that on social media?
I think so. Cole put it on the other day.
We'll post it.
Nice. Can we put it on the sign at the roundabout? Again, I'm just thinking, any bit of awareness helps. Right, it's not going to, it's not going to generate less people or fewer people.
Good. Um, have we had any communication with Yipper Mountain High School to see how much interest there's been?
Uh, I haven't. Uh, you know, ever since I talked to him about the T-shirts, they've made a pretty good design of the T-shirts and uh, he's, Jono, I forget his last name, but he's thinking there'd be a really good turnout. Kids from Rifle, kids from Newcastle. They should, hopefully they'll all be here.
Are, are there other skate competitions?
Yes, Rifle has two or three a year, and I've been to a few, and there's quite a few people that show up to them.
And there's a series of them in the Roaring Fork Valley. I don't know, I don't know the gates.
Carbondale, I believe they have them.
The Aspen and Snowmass participate, and it's some series of comps that go I think they even go up to the state national level if you qualify.
They might, yes.
Okay. Okay.
What, do we know the head count for the farm-to-table dinner? Like, how many, how many seats? Like, how big is this going to be?
Part of the discussion we're going to be having on Monday, a week from yesterday. Uh, there was a discussion, uh, to perhaps limit it to eighty to eighty-five people. Seems a little light to me, but we also have to figure out what the.
Because then ten, ten percent of the participation could be in this room.
That's, that was my point. To, uh, we have to talk about that.
I feel like bigger is better. Of course, I'm not cooking for it, so that's easy to say, but again, I, from a fundraising standpoint, eighty people is, is not going to get it done.
I would tend to agree. And that's a message that I will convey.
Yeah, I feel like I've been to prior the AVLT, their events over there in prior years, and there was probably nearly eighty people there. And that was informal by comparison to having a farm-to-table dinner.
Okay. Any other questions for staff or updates?
Sir.
Okay, updates from the board and board comments. Trustee Poston?
I just want to acknowledge, uh, lately, we have been having a lot more participation from community coming in, voicing their opinions and their wishes. And I just want to extend the appreciation that I have as a board member to, um, have the opportunity to listen from each one of the commu- community members. I also want to say thank you to the staff, thank you to everybody that works for the Town of Sale, thank you to the Board of Trustees. I think, um, we just don't emphasize enough how great it is to be part of a, a winning team, a good team.
All right. Trustee Britton? Trustee Lawson?
Um, I had a couple of questions. Um, and, and I guess I do have a request too. If, if, if Public Works has time, can you guys paint these stripes on Seventh Street? Because I see people at Senior Housing park, you know, the, they don't park diagonal. They park parallel to the sidewalk.
Yes.
And then, you know, I mean, obviously, when they do that, it takes up two or three spaces. So then, that's the only reason for asking for that, just because of the way.
They need it.
Park. Yeah. And are, are, are we making any progress on the whole center town homes?
Ball's in their court.
Okay. And, um, years ago, the painted pastures, they got approvals for a lot of that multi-family up along Highway Six. And then I see they're for sale now, so obviously do the approvals still?
They'll need to go through.
Okay, so then that's what I'm asking. They'll have to start all over again because it's been so long. Okay. All right. Then any word on the veterans' tiny homes?
Yes, we are working with them. They have their applications in, and so they're in the queue, and we've developed a fast-track, um, process to try to help them combine some things to get them through the process a little quicker.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right, thanks. Getting ready, Moon. Oh, yeah, and then my, my other one, the, the Eagles View Exercise Trail, you know, where we, you have the trail going up Eagles View Park? I mean, is, does anybody use that anymore? I mean, does it need to be?
Andreas, that's used.
I use it all the time.
Okay. That's what I was wondering. Does it, does it need to be updated?
Oh.
You know, and things like that, or?
Painted maybe, but there was, I mean, you guys renewed it just recently, the whole park.
Yeah.
And fixed the little, yeah, paths, the walking paths going up there, so it's pretty decent condition. Yeah.
Okay, I, I was just, I was just curious.
Yes, it's one of my favorite places to go for walks. You get a nice walk up the hill and it's nice and it's got some shade, and I often see quite a few people going up and down that trail, some with kids, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
That's everything I had. Thank you.
All right. Trustee Seifer?
Couple of things. Whatever happened to the, um, south of the railroad tracks, our competitors on their water, did they ever give up on that?
I haven't heard nothing for months.
Because, I mean, we get people calling us wanting to know about, you know, climate control, and I said, well, those, and they said, no, they're, you know, I said, I don't have a clue. I haven't heard anything. Let's.
We haven't heard back.
We haven't heard anything.
Yeah, I, okay, I just.
Okay.
And then I want to thank Joe for finally getting Grand Avenue done, and put stuff back on the shelves. It's amazing.
Put stuff back.
The vibration that that ground moves.
They still got a little bit of work, but I'm hoping it'll be all taken up by next week.
We, it, it actually shakes the house, the shelves, when they were doing, especially the asphalt, when they had the two comp, the packers going. I mean, it was rattling the windows. He took stuff off the shelves.
Yeah.
It moves the ground. Wouldn't think it would that two houses down, but it was. But it's good to see traffic back open.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. That's all I got.
Mayor Britton?
Nothing for me.
Nothing. Uh, the only thing I got, and I assume everyone's probably seen it, is last Wednesday, the Front Range voicing their concerns over the Shoshone water plant purchase.
I did see that, yes.
Um, you know, there's a, a group, who does it say, near Denver, Aurora Caro Springs in the North Water, uh, voiced opposition to this, this purchase. Um, you know, I would assume with that, that group of people, that they could fund ninety-nine million dollars pretty easily. So.
They want the water for themselves.
They want the water for themselves, so.
Simple as that.
Yeah, exactly. The thing is, the water rights aren't consumptive, so it wouldn't do many good.
Yeah.
I, they.
They're, they're non, but who knows what?
With the right amount of money, they could do it.
Yeah, so, uh.
I mean, if the water right remains non-consumptive, yeah. It doesn't matter who buys it.
Buys it.
Yeah, it's non-consumptive. It's not, it's.
But the, I think the, the risk is that if somebody who wants to use the water right as consumptive, they would have to change it, and they go to water court.
And I know that that could happen. I mean, with Claro River Compact and all, there's so many.
Uh, there's a lot of moving parts.
There's a lot of moving parts, but that's basically what the article says, is that's their their goal is probably to end up in water court over it, so.
Mm hmm.
Something we should pay attention to. I know we don't have a lot of money to give to that project. Uh, who knows what's going to happen on the federal level now with funding?
There seems to still be support from the federal de- delegation to move forward with purchase.
Yeah, so hopefully it still goes through, but something we should keep our eye on.
Yeah. The, the, the shortfall is, I want to say at this point, is less than two million dollars.
If they.
If the federal government.
If the federal government. If the federal government.
Big.
Better portion, yeah, so. Yeah, I think we all knew this was coming. So yeah, we can keep an eye on that. Other than that, when's our first concert? Two weeks? Year thirteenth? Everyone put it on their calendars. Other than that, next we will be entering into executive session. Gonna make sure, uh, the board will be going into executive session, will not return to the open session when we are done. Find a little card to read itself.
Wow, we even got it laminated.
It is laminated. I have two copies of it in case I lose one, so. So I move to go into the executive session for a conference with the town attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on a specific legal question. Under CRS section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four B. Uh, regarding the dedication of parkland to the town through fee ownership, easement or fee in lieu of dedication.
I will second.
Yeah, motion made by the mayor to enter an executive session, seconded by trustee Clausen, all in favor. All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. We will take a five-minute recess and get set up for our executive session.
At least you buy your water and it's on the other side of the mountain.
Yeah, that's frustrating, that.
The problem is there's no water to buy.